Call a meeting to order. Would, uh, we don't stand for the pledge. Ken, you're the closest, would you leave us?
I'd like to.
To apply of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as justice our own. Thank you.
This is a true story.
Craig isn't here, but I think we've been moving along with the, uh, administer via. Starting with the appointment of the district clerk.
Entertaining motion that he is. We appointed district clerk, doesn't have names. Doesn't have a name here, but it's, we know it's shit. Okay, here's Craig.
Craig made it. Seven second. No, you're, you're just in time for the vote of the district clerk.
Yeah. I go yes.
Is everybody ready? Okay, all, all in favor? Hi, unanimous, thank you. And now, uh.
Can I read my oath first before we move on? I'll just read it. Uh, I, Sherry Colletta, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge, according to the best of my abilities, the duties of the Office of District Clerk to the Board of Education at the Genesee Central School District, which I am now assigned. David, sign this.
Amen. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. So now, we will swear in our new board members. Sincere welcome, all three of you. The, the clerk will, uh, will take care of that for us.
I'm just gonna do this in order as we go down, no, actually no.
Yeah, the new clerk.
Do you, Don Ellis, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of the Office of School Board Member at the Genesee Central School District to which you are now assigned? Do you, Bobby Steinhour, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your abilities, the duties of the Office of School Board Member of the Genesee Central School District to which you are now assigned? Yes. Do you, Matthew Malabar, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your abilities, the duties of the Office of School Board Member of the Genesee Central School District to which you are now assigned?
Mrs. Malabar, you wanna get a more close up photo? The clerk off at an angle here and, uh. And fire away.
Sorry, perfect.
Okay.
Alright, I'm off to the.
Alright, welcome, officially welcome.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Um, okay. Now we, uh, we need, we need a superintendent.
Do you, Penny Flowers, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of the Office of Superintendent of the Genesee Central School District to which you are now assigned?
Here, you wanna do this? Very good. Okay. Now, um, nominations are open for the Office of President of the Board of Education.
I would like to. I don't know what order of this.
Oh, no, any order, um.
By me, I would like to nominate David Dwyer to continue as our board president. Great job guiding us over the last, over three years. Not too much number, which of those numbers it is?
Thank you, ma'am.
And I would like to nominate, uh, Mike Tenaliyo for the position of president.
We, we need a, do we need a second for?
I think you would need it, Sean. Well. Yeah, not for that, you wouldn't need it.
Yeah, for your roll call vote for each person.
Okay, so, we don't need a second then, uh, there you go.
That's the nominations.
Alright. Are, are there any other nominations for, uh, for president? God bless you.
Thank you.
Alright, um, why don't we just do a roll call vote? Ma'am?
I, I vote for Mike.
Okay.
Well, I vote for Mike.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll, uh, I'll vote for myself.
I vote for myself.
Okay, alright, thank you. Okay, thank you everyone, and, um. So now we need a, uh. Vice President.
I know, I'd like to nominate Mr. Dwyer.
I know, uh, Kevin also has some interest, but I'll leave it to him to accept or not. Yeah, I'll take you. I'll, I'll try.
Any other nominations for Vice President? Okay.
Yeah, so that was in favor of David for Vice President.
So we'll need to switch voices.
Do you, Michael Tenaliyo, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education of the Genesee Central School District, which you are now assigned?
Yes.
Do you, David Dwyer, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Genesee Central School District, which you are now assigned?
I will. Thank you.
Point of our first officer is that we're at two point zero one. The agenda.
Uh, I'd like to entertain. The consent motion for items. Two point zero two, two point zero. Second, we can do that on the consent, right?
Yes.
There are other, under other appointments, consent vote, um, I'd like to entertain the consent motion for items three point zero two through three point three four. Which, for everybody, that's insurance, consultants, school attorneys, education services, it's boilerplate material. There's a motion made in second, all in favor? Under. Section four designations, I'd like to entertain a consent motion for items four point zero two to four point zero nine.
Question about four point zero nine? That just was listed under the GSA, like, the standard, so thirteen dollars for breakfast, fifteen for lunch, and morning snacks for ten.
For all of those, it's, it's our banks, our newspaper mileage rates. Again, standard boilerplate material. All in favor? Any objections? There is. Under right, section five authorization, we'd like to entertain a consent motion for item five point zero two through five point one six. Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Nice.
Opposed? Don't move. And again, that's bid openings, it's policy-related material, bid openings, revenue anticipation notes, and standard policy. Under item six, there are sections that is bonding personnel. Entertaining a. The consent motions, running six point zero two and six point zero three. Where, yes. We need to do that tonight. And who is the current representative?
I didn't go on that.
Did you, uh, continue?
Sure.
So, under item six point zero three, have David Dwyer as a Genesee Valley School Board Representative. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
They opposed? Vote in ten. Under other items. Like to entertain a consent motion for item seven point zero two to seven point zero eight. Okay.
I had some question. Um, on seven point zero two, on the previous version of the. Oh, to conduct, that's seven point, that's, that's that line. Under the definitions, you had, um, listed the education law next to it, but I didn't see that in the current iteration. Is there a way that that could be?
The prior, um, edition that you had had not been approved by our school attorneys. The version you have, um, was the version that they had suggested that we had brought.
Okay, so that's been vetted through attorneys?
Yes.
Okay, and then the other question I had was, is seven point oh four? If there could just be a change to, um, page three, to correct the board members to include Craig Phelps? And, and remove Kathy Bondi.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Don't move. Then it's learning plans, special education district plans, if there's anybody who can't, yeah.
Before we adjourn this meeting, can we go back to three point three four and appoint three members to the audit and policy committee?
Um, can we wait? Is it okay to wait on that? Do we have to do that tonight?
We don't have to do it. The first audit policy or audit committee meeting is scheduled for the next board meeting, so I just didn't know between, like.
I'll, I'll lay this to board. Okay, would you like some time to think about who would wanna be on each committee, as well as discuss various committees?
I would like some more information about each committee, what it entails.
Can we do that the next, and then we'll just postpone the audit meeting until we have a.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Anything else on reorganization maybe? I think so, entertain a motion, we end the reorganization maybe?
By seventeen.
Alright, if we call the meeting to order in five point five?
Um, I don't know what the question is. Hey man, you haven't talked separately or voted separately on five point one six, is that correct?
I just wanted more information.
Okay.
Should, which, which would be more appropriate in an executive session?
Okay. I don't know the nature of the question, so I can't.
When, actually, you do have to get down.
Yeah, yeah, I guess the question is now we're at the answer, which would you prefer?
I would pick up the.
And, okay, let's hold that till the end of the meeting, then we'll, that's five point one six. Okay.
Where?
One point six.
One point oh six. Who was the?
Oh, okay. I'm moving to in the, in the meeting, but, seconds?
All in favor? Any questions? All in favor, in the poll? Some move.
Move, we, uh, move the, uh, minutes from the, uh, last meeting.
Two twenty two. Second. Any questions on the minute in the last meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Don't move.
So here we are in, in July, and so, um, as you can see, we are deep in our summer cleaning and also continuing in our construction project. My board report really tonight talks about the future capital project with the large gym. I really wanted to spend just a couple of minutes talking about why are we here? Um, some of you know very well that there were significant structural concerns identified in the summer of twenty twenty two. It actually required us to close the gym and, um, come up with a plan for remedial work. You can see in the lower right picture, um, the actual daylight coming through the blocks, indicating that those orange blocks were, um, the adhesive used to connect those blocks was epoxy, which has now failed, um, not a typical or standardized manufacturing, construction method in how you would construct a block wall. So we did, um, install the twelve inch gauge strips that went from floor to ceiling to keep the blocks from falling, because really the fear is not that the gym is going to fall down, because it is a steel structure, but really there was danger of those, those blocks coming in. So, this is a short-term fix. They really recommended that within two years, we look at next steps in how we remediate and move forward with our large gym. So we have, we have had a building planning task force meeting that was held in March. We also talked to our physical, physical education staff. And really what we determined is that we needed additional teaching spaces for daily PE classes. The programmatic needs are restricted based in our current setting. Um, when we did meet in March, the Building Planning Task Force, not only this time, but in prior Building Planning Task Force meetings, really talked about needing that additional space for our PE stations. It also provides flexibility with scheduling. Having more teaching spaces, spaces allows us to have more classes. Opportunities for athletic practices, we schedule at earlier times. I've said it many, many times. The great thing about Genesee is that our students are involved in everything. And the horrible thing about Genesee is our students are involved in everything. And sometimes our students are here from seven in the morning until eleven o'clock at night. So, this would allow us to schedule practices at earlier times if we were able to add additional space. We are also the community hub, and youth sports scheduling availability is very tight. Many times in the winter, the only times that youth sports can get in here are after RJV, adversity, and modified practices, which tends to be later, and those are our younger students, or on Sunday. Um, on Sunday in the winter, you will find that gym is, is booked from eight in the morning until six, seven o'clock at, at night. And last but not least, we really need an updated gym that our students and community are proud of. Um, far too many times you hear students go to other facilities and, and neighboring districts and say, why can't we have a gym like X? Why does our gym look like this? Um, and so I do think it's important to listen to all those, um, stakeholders and, and come up with a plan. So when we look at our capital improvement project, we have had multiple, um, renditions of, of the models. And, you know, when we looked at the different models, we did look at going outside of our, our current footprint. And I don't wanna say that when we went outside of our current footprint that it was too expensive. It was more about the fact that it, um, became a much greater impact for our local share. So anything that is outside of a renovation is not aided for, um, for tax, for building aid purposes. And so that cost would fall solely on the taxpayers. And I will show you later what the impact is for each one of the proposals that we're looking at tonight. And, um, our current building aid is right around seventy one percent. Uh, that is lower than, than most neighboring districts, but it, it has increased in, in the recent years. So we do have to be cognizant of putting out a project that meets our needs, but is also fiscally sound. Um, so when you look at our three different proposals, they are numbered one, four, and five. And that is because it correlates with the drawings that we have gone through, through the different, um, plans that we have looked at. And we really feel that one, four, and five give you a, a wide range of opportunities to choose from as far as cost, and then what it also o- offers us as opportunities for our students. What's important to note is that all proposals do include the secure vestibule. So we are talking about having, uh, a situation, if you've ever visited Mountmore Central School District, where all visitors would come into a secure entrance, and they are not allowed into the school until they've passed through, um, a raptor situation and have been approved to enter our school. It would be a separate door, and I can, I can show you that in the plans later. But when you think about the safety and security of our students, um, the way our main entrance is, is set up right now, it, it makes it very difficult to stop a person once they are buzzed into our building. They could very quickly enter either the middle school, high school, or heading on towards the elementary. So when we look at this plan, this is option one. The colors do represent, um, a level of, of renovation. So the yellow is, is your most, um, least, um, intrusive modification. So really what we're doing in, in this edition is the orange outline, we are basically replacing the new, the black, old block walls that are deficient with new block walls, and then giving the entire gym locker room a facelift. So not changing anything to do with the layout, really just replacing the safety issue.
Can I ask just a general question first? There's, there are three different options, but do we have a needs analysis? And, yeah, I, I don't know if we've surveyed internally, if we've looked at externally. What is it we want, aside from just a nice chip? What amenities, what things? That I don't know. I know, I know we need a gym. That's not the point. It's, is there, is there an analysis of what should be included in the capital improvement project?
So I wouldn't say that there's been an analysis done. I would say that we have listened to our stakeholders throughout the multiple years of the Building Planning Task Force and what their needs are. That was really when I talked about the needs on, on this slide. We did talk to our physical education staff. We've talked to, um, staff or community members that have come to the Building Planning Task Force. You know, one of the things that I would worry about is that if we plan to move forward with the December twenty twenty three vote, we have very little time to have a needs analysis completed, new, um, plans completed to meet those timelines, because you know the secret needs to be completed and, and all those pieces. So, I'm, I'm not quite sure that we would get more of, um, more feedback in regards to what we need in, on our physical education basis if we did a survey at this point.
Okay. Go through the options.
Um, so again, so really this option, you would be replacing the block walls to make them safe, and you would just renovate and get the whole gym a facelift, not changing the layout, so the top would continue to be, this is the upper floor. Um, the mezzanine would be in the one end, and again, we would just be updating the team rooms that currently exist in that hallway across from, from the pool. And when we look at option one, that is ten million dollars. And, and again, so it's a basic renovation of the gym walls, there's no additional PE spaces. It does not address, address our programmatic needs. And really, we're just looking at giving the overall space a facelift and making those block walls safe. When we look at what is the local impact, and these are approximations. So if you're looking at a hundred fifty thousand dollar house with no star, it would be fifty one dollars and seventy four cents increase, an annual increase every year. For a hundred fifty thousand dollar house with basic star, it'd be forty one dollars and thirty nine cents increase each year. And then the enhanced star is twenty seven dollars and thirty five cents each year. So, just to give you an idea of what that would cost, and again, these are approximations, um, as far as cost. When we look at the second option, which is option four, we are doing more renovation in that area, so we are not changing our current floor plan, but more extensive renovations, um, really moving the locker room, so we have the locker rooms on, um, I guess it would be on the. This side is down here. We're moving the locker room so to this side of the gym. We have team rooms on the other side. Um, and you can see next to the hallway, those team rooms also would be renovated. And then in that yellow big rectangular area, that is an exercise space that would take place of the mezzanine. Um, because that is going to be repurposed, you'll see in the next slide. So again, it's not giving you any additional gym space, but we are renovating and changing the team room locations and the locker room locations. This is the second floor, and what you see in those areas, what used to be the mezzanine, those are now UPK classrooms, so we would have our pre-K programs here on site. And then on the other end, where you typically had our, where our team rooms are now located, we would have a large group instruction area, and we would also have a, another UPK classroom. So this year, we are starting our second UPK classroom at Pride and Joy, and, um, you know, always looking to expand the need to have our UPK classrooms here. So if when you look at option four, you're over nineteen million dollars, and again, it's renovation updates the large gym, we do get a fully functional exercise room to replace the mezzanine, renovates the locker rooms and the team rooms, provides three UPK rooms, provides our LGI, there's no addition, and still we're struggling to address our, our programmatic needs. And when you look at again, the approximate increase, so I, again, on a hundred fifty thousand dollar house, no star, we're looking at a hundred and five dollars increase, almost a hundred and six. And with basic star, you're at almost eighty five dollars every year increase. And then with enhanced star, you'd be at fifty six dollars. And you can see that the. Approximate tax levy increases four point nine percent every year. So our last option, this is option five. And this is the lower, this is where our current large gym is now. So you can see it looks significantly different. So we really thought creatively and we thought, how could we add additional instructional space? As well as work within the confines of our current footprint and um meet our needs. So in that lower section, there is a new technology wood shop. There would be our CAD labs. And in the middle of that drawing, you would have updated team rooms and locker rooms. And then team rooms um on the other side of this of this hallway. So what we'd be doing is like in our similar project is we'd be moving our gym. To this level of floor. Our gym would not be in the lower section. It would be on on our first floor. So you can see now we have changed the the orientation of our gym. So we would be able to add more bleacher space. And our gym would actually go the opposite way. And when we had our bleachers pulled back, we would have three instructional spaces for our middle school, high school classrooms. The other important part, this is the technology art wing. And those first three classrooms would be renovated to be UPK classrooms. What's nice about this addition and and this model is that we would be have, be able to have a separate entrance and drop off for. Our UPK students. They could pull into that tech wing, drop their students off. There would be an entrance right there. Um, easily accessible for for the parents. So that would be option five. And with option five does come a significant increase. We're at thirty five million. But again, it's heavy renovation renovation of the gym and locker rooms. We're adding team rooms. We are getting that additional physical education instructional space. And we do have our renovated UPK classrooms, which are easily accessible to our families. When you look at that increase, so for a hundred fifty thousand dollar full value home. Um, with no star, we're at two hundred and nine, almost two hundred and ten dollars. Um, with basic star, we're at a hundred and sixty, um, almost a hundred and sixty eight dollars and enhanced star, almost a hundred and eleven dollars. So and you can see a a tax impact of nine point seven one percent each year. And uh I did talk about the secure entry and just this is what it would look like. So. This is next to where we have the tiered steps. This now takes the place of of the tiered step. They would have. Their own entrance. So it's not like they would come into any of those main doors that currently exist. You can see the door all the way to the top in the vestibule. They would enter that vestibule and then they'd go into the waiting area. They would have to check in. And so there's two levels of secure doors before they would enter our school. This is an all three options, absolutely. Um, you can also see there's a security office i- in this um. Drawing as well, and we would have our SRO located there. And so they would also have visibility of the main entrance as as well as being close proximity. To the check in of of our secure entrance. Um, if you know Officer Hopper, he does not sit in his office all day long, every day. He's out and about and. Um, you know, greeting kids and um reading in classrooms and getting to know students. Um, but that is where he would be located. He's not doing those those activities. So next step really is for the board to think about the fiscal impact that was presented. Select an option to move forward with um with our with our schematic design. So that we can prepare for our building project vote in in December of twenty twenty three. Are there any questions about the options? Um, before we move on and just talk about current update on the on the current project?
Is the. Is is state aid, building aid factor in in all this?
Yes.
Okay.
So in the diagrams, I didn't see. So there was only mention of any work being done on the gym area. Um, so in the past building project, there was work that was supposed to be done that had to be eliminated. Is that going to be considered as part of this building proposal?
So there was work that was going to be completed in the cafeteria in the foyer and create um a senior cafe. As well as in the auditorium, the cafeteria, the senior cafe and that foyer that that work will not be completed. I did meet with, I could have included that in my needs assessment. I did talk to the finance department. And they determined that they did not want to move forward with some of those previous um recommendations that were cut out of the of the project. So the catwalk, they had talked about, um, there was a million dollar sound system that they they didn't feel was um needed. That would be used once a year for the musical. And so we did have a meeting and and that's what their recommendation was.
When would we need to have a a particular option selected in order to? Stay on this timeframe and not sold that we have been? Help me out. What is, what's the next? Say milestone in terms of understanding and staying on that December time?
Okay, as far as seeker, we need to have that submitted by.
We were partying September.
Is there a project scheduled yet? I mean, rough draft?
So how it works is that whatever date a district chooses to have the referendum, you then work backwards from there.
Right.
And it's a minimum of forty five days prior to the referendum date, the Board of Education has to do two actions. One is there has to be a seeker done. The board can act on it and determine that it's a they declare a negative declaration on. The seeker that there's no impact, whether it's an impact. Then they would act on setting the referendum date. Those two events can happen at the same board meeting. But they have to happen at a minimum of forty five days prior to the referendum. Can't be less than forty five.
I'm simply gonna say, if you know, we assume December twenty twenty three, pick a a day in that month. And then what's the project schedule backup?
So so if you were to pick a date. Uh, in December, um, maybe the first half of December, that. Put you roughly around October to make that those two decisions. And so you would, that's where I was going with it, was that then, so prior to that. October action, the architect has to do the seeker. It's, there's different levels of seekers, but this one probably doesn't elevate to the extended seeker. It's it's a more. Reveated version of the seeker. And it probably takes about thirty days-ish. So work backwards from there. So they have to get started by September, early September to do the seeker. Be ready by October. And they would need to know what your decision is, what project it is, if you want to do it. What the scope is so they can apply their seeker process to that specific project. It can't be ambiguous. It can't be, oh, I think we're gonna do one or two, but we haven't made up our mind. It's a decision. Okay, we're doing whatever it is. And then they act on the seeker. If the seeker done, then bring it, we bring it to the board and the board acts on it.
So did, if I just say, then are we looking at like late August, first Labor Day weekend thereabouts? Is that?
For final decision?
Well, no, in order to carry the seeker, our decision.
Oh, yeah, I I would say early September.
Okay. Is there, given the the nature of the gymnasium, is there anything? A lack of better words, right? This may not be the appropriate words, but can we consider this an emergency situation?
Well, I think so in the eyes of the State Education Department, right? There were some specific prescriptions they have to meet to make it defined as an emergency project.
And we are, we've already done emergency work. That's what the steel angles were. So the block started to come loose and fall and. So those steel angles locked in place until we can figure out how do we come up with a permanent solution.
I think it would be an uphill battle with the State Education Department, Dr. Bruce and Roger. It's a valid question. It's worth it. You know, yes, I'm glad you asked it, because. Yes. I don't think it meets that criteria though.
Can we look back at the drawings and see like where where the art department, those things are moving to?
So the art department's not. So the CAD labs would be moving, the CAD labs and the current um technology class, not the.
The art would stay in that same hallway where the UPK is gonna be?
Right here.
Okay. So the white is the existing.
White is existing art rooms and they would stay.
Okay. So the only thing would be this CAD labs.
The other thing about.
Those are moving down below.
Mm-hmm. And um. I think the pointer works in this, it doesn't, um. What's nice about moving those rooms down there is that to the left of that is the new steam space. And you would anticipate your career and tech programs, you know, having all their. Equipment and classes right in that area.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking about part as part of Steve being logically. In that space as well.
Um, and it doesn't mean that they couldn't still utilize that space.
Right. Because there's, as of now, it's. The new construction is just like a blink. It's like. That's currently underway.
When you say like, I mean, there is going to be electrical drops, wifi drops and.
Yeah, but it's not, nothing is currently slated for that space.
There's not a class scheduled to be there January first, correct?
Um, you know, I just, I can't stress enough that, you know, this is, this is a once in a generation opportunity. Um, and. There are certainly some improvements that are needed with the auditory. Especially from a safety standpoint, from a storage standpoint. Um, I just think it would be in the district's best interest. To look at some of those things and incorporate that as part of this project. Anytime you're dealing with a gymnasium, you're obviously going to have massive public support. So if you're looking to do any enhancements to um with years of of underfunding in the district. You you have an opportunity to. Reset, you know, and get us to where where you would like us to be versus. Kicking the camp continually down the road where we always find ourselves to be behind. So I just would like us to think about that.
What what were the options two?
And and this this power, this PowerPoint will be on the website. So you can, you know, for the, and I think we can also send um. These in your email as well. So it's easier to see. So. This is option four. Um, so again, you're not increasing any of your PE stations. So significant renovation in updated team rooms, locker rooms. Um, and then, you know, more of a facelift type in the in the yellow area. So in the corridors and in that exercise room.
Definitely, I was asking the question earlier about needs analysis, because in a needs analysis, we also prioritize. And from that prioritization, we can kind of get a sense of what is really essential. And and if if upgraded locker room, I I don't, I I don't know what the answer is, but just simply saying if if we identify. Item A, B, and C is really important and that is only included in option five, then that's kind of what we should. Understand. That's that's why I think that kind of builds on.
So from a design standpoint with the locker rooms, um, is there? Is there additional privacy going to be built into the the team rooms and the locker room spaces?
These are very schematic, but the renovations to locker rooms are really being driven by the. Need to add UPK on the first floor. So when we. Put those spaces on the first floor, we displace the team rooms. So then we move the team rooms down to the lower level and we're looking for. You know, ways to reorganize the space because apparently the locker rooms are very large and they take up. Um, a good chunk of real estate down there. So how can we consolidate the locker rooms and free up some space for the displaced team rooms?
So when you speak about privacy, you're talking about, for instance, showers?
I'm talking about just privacy, privacy in general for the students.
Yeah. So I've seen a trend, we've seen a trend um here the last several years of, again, showers. Um, individual shower stalls. Instead of, in the old days, it was a tower. Everybody just went in, right? Those are gone. Those are going away. We're doing it in another district now, getting rid of them. Um, and sep- having separate individual private spaces. So people going into the pool, they have to, they have to went down. So that's that's the trend.
So it's hard to see with the team rooms. I know your question is about the locker rooms, but yes, the idea was. You know, how do we take the office for the coach and make it so that they can supervise without having sight lines of the athletes? How do we get the toilet rooms away from where the athletes might be changing? How do we block sight lines from the corridor when the door opens? Into where athletes might be changing. You can kind of see we have a bar in the middle and then the. The changing areas to the left and to the right. And then we were using CMU walls as a way to kind of break up some of those sight lines. Um, the locker rooms are a little less developed. But yes, privacy would be a huge concern once we start diving into the. The details of the floor plan.
The other question I had. So at the the last presentation you guys made, you made mention of um having sub pumps. Built in. And so now there's gonna be classrooms down there below the pool level. So I'm assuming that's still part of the plan.
Right, so part of the efficient, absolutely address and mediate flooding. Lessons learned from the past.
Not only, not only the presentation, but um the the drawings to. To all your emails. You have more time to to look at that digest and ask questions, which brings us to another factor that does play into this. Is, as you know, we just talked about the the flooding of the floor and the damage. And then we had to have the required mercury testing completed. And as you know, in March of twenty twenty three, the updated memo came out in regards to not. Covering a floor that contains mercury. So after that original testing was completed, we had a meeting with various members from the Department of Health. Um, DEC, Campus SEI, um, Dean Engineering, we're we're part of of that meeting and we. Um, talked about, would we be able to move forward with replacing that floor over our rubberized floor? Based on the testing results showing that it it is safe when that wooden floor is installed. And they said, yes. Only based on the fact that you will then be entering into a larger project to truly replace that floor in the future. And and truly remove um the mercury containing floor. So that is, that is another. Component of of thinking about moving forward with with this next building project is we are being allowed to repair the floor. And put that wooden floor over up, over that rubberized flooring, but based on. The knowledge that we are going to move forward with the capital projects to renovate that area. And. And just we, that work will um resume in September twenty twenty three. So we were hoping to have that done. Prior to school starting, um, just with our our flooring installer schedule that is possible.
Do we still have to have ventilation? There was the new surface and temporary surface.
So if you remember from from that presentation, the mercury levels over the wooden floor. Were almost minuscule. So we would not need to worry about increased ventilation.
So there's no health concerns.
Right.
According to the.
According to the environmental engineers. And D, and 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 don't forget, DEC and DOH have reviewed those results as well. So it's not, you know, there's multiple. Correct.
Now, if we wait until September, that impacts the next school year. How do we?
I mean, yes, certainly not having a large gym to start out with. Um, in September is gonna impact our um PE classes. But at that time, most of the time they're outside anyways. Um, for PE classes and then we'll work with SUNY Geneseo for our um volleyball.
And this is based on the scheduling. And that, in my former life, we were able, always able to kind of talk about expedite these things like that. That might be, change their schedule.
We reached out, I mean, we, yeah.
I'm sure Ken doesn't want to hear me say that, or anybody in the. It's something. It's something that we would be willing to pay for, but it doesn't get us where we want to go, so, um because the installer can't get back to.
So it's typically start in September. That like, do they have timeframe of completion?
If they start in the first part of September, it would be the end of September when they would.
Okay. That's, it's a lot better impact than it was last year, where we're busing our students to Mount Morris for volleyball and.
I agree.
We're a road team, so it's much preferred.
Their their shirts said it all, their um tour, their volleyball tour. I appreciate their humor. Um and just as you can see, walking into the auditorium. Um we are busy with our summer cleaning, and I just really wanted to to highlight what our summer crew is doing. That is the same floor. And the picture on the left is after and the picture on the right is before. Um they are doing a fantastic job, and I really just have to thank the GFA, because. Many of you think that teachers have the summers off, um but I can tell you that more often than not, teachers are in here doing curriculum work, interviews. Uh AP classes and asking um them to stay out of their area for a week or two weeks at a time while we do this work. Isn't inconvenient, but they've all been um very appreciative and just really wanted to highlight and and thank our our summer crew. And Gary, do you wanna give us an update on the current project?
Maybe you were with us, was it last month when we did tour? Things, uh boatloads and stuff, but no, it's good, it's all good, really, we're. They started skinning the the insulated metal panel, which is your finished product on the other side that you'll see forever. Is up and going around the building, so that means enclosure of the building, which is good, because it's a little bit ahead of schedule, I don't wanna say it too loud, but it, we're, we're in a good spot there, so. Um they've hung the heating units in the in the gym, they've got the piping, they've insulated the roof drains. The framing is done inside for um for the um. Pads, wall pads, um they're, they're, the contractor is framing the columns, exterior decorative columns that you see on the renditions. So they're framing those now as we speak, they've been casting the concrete for the exterior stair that goes up to the uh second floor. Golly, uh oh, auditorium, long anticipated auditorium project started, so we jumped on that. Um the district was very cooperative and helpful to get out of the way, get their stuff moved out of the band and chorus rooms and that, and so the contractors. Coming to do their demo. You walk out here, you'll see all the floors have been ripped up. We just got all the vinyl off, vinyls out of the cafeteria, out of the entrance or the. Common area over here, and the demo is pretty much done there. Now starting to put things back together, really cool things, Sydney and I were just talking about this, is. In the, over here in the music room, it used to be steps down, and those are gone now. So there's been infilled with the structural foam. It'll get its concrete topping, and so that's pretty neat, and that'll happen over the other rooms on the other side of the elevation, so. Uh a lot of progress has been made so far, and it's only July. So we running gun in July and August, but um it it's positive, it's in a good spot. Any questions?
And what's the schedule for, kind of, for completion of that?
So it will be, for, oh, for the odd.
Yeah.
For the odd work is for school start, so by the end of next month, we'll be out of there. And the rest of the gym still goes on through the fall, we're returning it over very first part of December, because. That man over there asked you his final cost reports to file in December, so I have to have it done, we have to have it done. And hats off, I was just praising this young man's um accolades a few minutes ago. SCI's done phenomenal job for us. Brock and Jim Cotter are are boots on the ground, doing an awesome job as well. But when they need answers, this guy over here is responsive, and that's what we need, because literally every minute counts for the summer, it matters. So um they've they've got a good synergy between the group that, the Jim Cotter, the Brock, and the Kyle, of a really good. Synergistic relationship going on as far as working together, getting answers. Inversing, debating, good solutions and coming up with a way to, because you don't do construction without having problems and. Um they they encounter problems, so they solve them and they keep moving, and it keeps the contractors going, so that's huge.
Well, thank you all.
All good? Oh, I'm I'm gonna stick my neck out there a little bit, probably should do a tour next month, if not September sometime soon, see what's going on. Got new new board members, it might be exciting to see that. On the field?
Uh the doctor.
Ball now? Oh, oh, sorry.
I included in the weekly update that the polls were set, um in the, in the first week of August, the net and the poll, the. Polls for the polls were set, um and the polls and the netting will be first week of August.
And site work too, right? We're gonna bring a site contractor back, probably in about six or eight weeks. Am I speaking on a turn? Okay, so.
We're trying to get him here by uh the first week of August to start back on the parking lot out there. So obviously, you guys know from the last time we talked, we were trying to get the panels up. So once we get those up on the building, it opens up the real estate for us to then go back to partner.
It'll really start to look finished then, when the site contractor comes in, starts doing final grading, getting our yard ready. But a huge milestone was met the other day, I'm sorry, I took too long, sorry. Um the power, we got those permanent power swapped out, um a week ago last Saturday, night, National Grid was here. With a crew, came in around Saturday and swapped out the permanent power. It's really, related to the the building itself and the addition, so that was a big milestone. I, people um didn't get affected too much on that. And then on the air conditioning, it's comfortable in here, it was not last week. Yeah, pretty impressive, because they were rebuilding the uh cooling tower, which is done. That's why you're sitting there comfortable and not sweating today. So that was done really well and and on time, so. We're making progress, really are, some big things are being accomplished, and it's, you don't see it all necessarily, but it's really happening. It's pretty cool.
Mike, could I ask you a quick question, just to verify if you mind? Just because I have a vested interest in the auditorium, did you say that we're gonna be able to access it in September? So we can do like a show in November in the auditorium?
I know people, we just had this conversation.
You just made some folks have.
Well, I think we have to be, the only thing I have to, we have to worry about is the theatrical lighting and sound, because that was on a a significant.
But you're not gonna be without it, you're gonna have, you may have the old system still while, before, while the new system hasn't come yet.
Okay.
But you'll still have the old one.
Okay.
And we can, you can use that and then we'll, you won't even, you won't even notice it, we'll swap it out and it'll be okay when we get the new one in here. They have some lead time, like ten months or twelve months, it's a ridiculous time, but. I guarantee you, you're gonna walk in there and go, oh my God, you'll never get that, we will, trust me.
Putting out pillars to the world of where he can do a show.
Me and Chief Facilities Director today laid off one of my field managers on a project, it's like, he's losing his mind, it's like, it's only July twelfth, wait a minute. Still got a lot of time in our world, we'll make it, don't worry, we'll make it. Yeah, okay. You're welcome, have a good night. Are we good?
You are good.
Thank you.
Anybody for uh any relationships? No audit finance at this point, so, on different committees.
Personnel, I'd like to make a motion for a consent agenda for items five point zero two through five point two two.
Any discussion on? All of the personnel items with the exception of the five point six, five point one six.
I just had a question about five point zero eight, five point zero nine, once I read them and it appeared to be this thing.
So um different school years, so um the advisor for ski was not, for the ski club was not appointed last year. So we were appointed for last year and this year.
Okay.
Um and I just wanted to. Publicly thank Stephanie Miller for her time, um. She'll greatly be missed.
Understand? Any further discussion on personnel items? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Business, I'm. Items six point zero two. Through six point zero seven, second.
Any questions and comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Under business office, I'd like to make make a motion that we approve. Item seven point zero two, right?
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? No, there's two items for executive session, right?
Yes. So I'll make a motion to go into a second obsession of, for two items. Want to um discuss the employment history with a particular employee. Secondly, to discuss the superintendent's contract.
All in there?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.